We can steal some chairs out of the little courtroom. If we need more. Okay, the public hearing on zone changes is still open from last month's meeting. So, does anybody have any comments on the zone changes?
So, the hedges is still gonna still remain the same. The way according to this, you've just added on, if anybody puts in any hedges and stuff, especially hedges, that they have to be four feet away from the, well, more or less from the line and that then after that is to maintain and they should be two feet if they're for the growth.
Tim, can you explain that hedge one to Carol?
What's that, Karen?
That's one where...
The one for the hedges?
Yeah.
The thing is, it says if anybody puts any hedges and stuff, that they would have to place them four feet from the sidewalk, that way giving them the two feet.
Sidewalk and or property line or wherever the actual right road right away is.
So, can I ask a question is, is that with the problem with the one at the corner of Stowe Street and Cascade, are they gonna do something with her?
Well, that's why that last sentence was put in there. I don't know if you read that. The very last one, F.
It says be rectified to comply with the provisions.
Within twelve months.
So, she's gonna have to...
Gives us a little more teeth, basically, because it's actually in the zoning law that even a hedge that is existing but is not compliant, we can actually do something about it.
Okay, 'cause I'm just, I'm just saying, so she's gonna have to...
Well, as far as a little more vague, you know what I'm saying, that...
But, so, it says here, she's gonna have to do something.
We're hoping, yes.
So, if she doesn't happen, I've just been ringing up to the committee all the time, what are you gonna do? I mean, she's not in compliance.
I think it gives us a little more teeth as far as, you know, sending out like a compliance order or a court appearance or something like that.
But it's been twelve, you know, twelve months, but it's been two-plus years. So, if anybody else does anything in the village, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna open up a can of worms for anybody to say, boy, you're giving people all this and you have this in effect. So, what is that telling to the public?
We didn't have that last sentence in there.
I know, but it's just the idea. I just don't see how to... So, if she doesn't do, then I'm just saying to the board, I guess she's gonna have to do that or cut them back to the...
I agree with that statement.
So, the thing is, she's gonna have twelve months. So, the twelve months when you do this, it's gonna be, again, in the wintertime?
Pretty much, yeah. But hopefully we can come to compliance before that.
But I'm just saying, it's just been ridiculous on this matter with the person.
Well, that's the thing with the zoning and the public hearing and all that, too. It's always evolving, so, just like tonight, I spoke with Mr. Burrows yesterday, and there's something else that needs to be amended on this zoning law. So, therefore, I'm gonna suggest that this public hearing stay open after the meeting again, maybe till the next meeting or further discussion or whatever. And I'm hoping the board is...
And that makes good sense. So, if we go through the public hearing this evening, we can then adjourn it out into next meeting as well, and that will also give the board adequate time to do a proper secret review and take into account any comments that are made.
I mean, this is one to the county planning board, and I don't know if you've got a copy of it or, I have one here somewhere. If you want it, you can have it.
There should be copy and written, you mean the referral from the county?
Yeah.
That should be in everybody's packet.
Okay. Well, I have it right here.
But that's, I'm just bringing up that, it's just the idea that it's in law.
I understand your frustration, and we're, we're the same way, you know what I mean? Because we really didn't have the ability to, we tried to, we tried to work with people when you're trying to impose, as I said before, a large expense on somebody, you know what I'm saying?
But that's not...
I understand what you're saying, but if, if it were me or anybody else, I mean, if it were Henry and we were imposing a, say, ten, fifteen thousand dollar possible expense on him, on his property, to me, that's a big thing. The board was trying to be a little bit lenient, but I think you are correct. The only answer is that that needs to be removed.
Yeah.
Couple, couple of issues, actually.
Yeah, and it's just the idea that's really bad through there. And it's just the idea, I'm just trying to just point out, it's, we've gone through this long yin and yang, and it's like how much longer we're letting that person extend. There should be no more extensions, because it's saying when another person, something happens, they're gonna say, well, the board allowed this to happen. It's not gonna make you all look good, because you've got laws.
I don't know if there's a law, though. I mean, I, I suppose if they want to, to a court appearance or whatever, and the law stated this, they, they really wouldn't have any leg to stand on, is that...
Well, respectfully, and I'm coming into this without knowing the history, and there sounds to be...
Can we introduce Jim?
Hi. Yeah, I'm Catherine Herringer. Jim Burrows is my partner, Colonel Herringer-Burrows. I'm standing in for him this evening as the village attorney. So, that's why I keep piping in here and there. So, obviously, it sounds to me like there is some history with this particular matter. It sounds like it's gone back quite a ways for you especially, and I can understand that you sound, that you're frustrated, that you've probably been working towards a resolution with this. I don't know what the contention with the hedges have been, and it's just because I, you know, I haven't been involved in that matter at all.
All you gotta do is go over there and see as you're as a driver, see what the obstruction is.
So, it's that it's obstructing and so it's dangerous. So, well, to some degree, I think my understanding is that Paul at one point was working with that individual in an effort to make it less obstructive. From a zoning perspective, if the zoning did not afford the village the ability to actually do something about it, their hands were kind of tied. So, if my understanding is correct, what will happen moving forward is presumably they will have, as Tim was saying, some teeth and an appropriate enforcement letter would be sent. They'd have to follow an internal procedure, but that is, you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, that's, you know, the, the law is, the state has written it, so we're kind of tied as far as that's concerned. But at that point, they would come in and most people remedy upon receiving the letter, but if this individual did not and they had an offending shrug that was causing an issue, was in violation of the local zoning, then we would be able to enforce compliance through the use of the court.
Thank you. Any other comments on zoning? No, we'll leave it open?
We can have this.
Mayor, if, if Tim wants to leave it open, because we got some more stuff, I'm gonna recommend that we leave, we leave this open through the next meeting, which is December eighteenth. That's, that'd be my motion.
Okay, again, Dan.
Summary eighteen.
You have a second on that?
I'll figure that out.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, approval of minutes of the October sixteenth, we're gonna...
I'll make the motion. We approve the minute that I've written.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Um, Mayor?
So, just for the sake of the minutes, you might consider, for this evening, closing the public hearing to be reopened at December eighteenth's meeting.
That's my motion.
Yeah.
Close tonight. And who, who's that?
I, I'm sorry.
Caught up, Wendy?
Huh?
Have you caught up?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Just give you a minute. Okay, approval of vouchers?
All right, general fund, two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy dollars and three cents. Water fund, fifty-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten dollars and seventy-two cents. Sewer fund, thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. And the general fund, three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. And we had, I think the biggest thing in the general fund was the retirement.
Right. It was over, it was over a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars of that general fund bill was for New York State retirement, for both the police department and the DPW. And we're paying it early here in December, because if we do, we get a discount. Basically, we're saving money by paying it early. You need a second on?
Yes, I'll make, I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Unfinished business. Groundwater well development project, phase two. Basically, we're working on with GYMO Engineering, planning grant, and Paul and I will be meeting with GYMO next Tuesday morning to hopefully finalize that grant, the application and get it sent in. Do you have anything, have you heard from anybody that I have on the groundwater? Basically, we're going out looking for grant monies before we move forward with that. And this planning grant, we wouldn't see any money on that until sometime after January, if we're lucky enough to get it. Any trustees, any questions on that?
No.
Waste water treatment plant. Basically, that's done down there, but we're still waiting for New York State to do our long-term bonding, which was supposed to take place in July, and now it's been pushed off to January. But they're playing catch-up down there at AFC, because they've had a lot of retirements. And so, what you're seeing in your packet tonight, basically, these were change orders that were approved from American Processing Group, North Country Contractors, GYMO, and three of them from GYMO, one, one with plan specification approval, and then engineering report from GYMO. So, basically, the paperwork we should have had months ago that we just got from the state this month. Hopefully, we're gonna be on track and be able to close this thing out in January. Zoning changes. We got the information back from the county planning board. Questions on that? You will talk with Megan and post all those changes. I think she corrected, right?
Yeah, I got an email from Matt from Tug Hill this afternoon, and basically, that map, there was a map discrepancy in, for the Lewis County Fairgrounds. Originally, it was zoned as a park, or that defined as a park, and somehow it got changed to classified NC one. And that happened when we did the change for the Key Bank.
Key Bank, somehow when they redid the map.
Somehow when they redid the map, that ended up NC one, and Matt said it was definitely a mistake, and he does not know how it happened, so...
Pam worked on that today, didn't she, with him, to get that map corrected?
Yeah, we talked to Matt from Tug Hill, and they were aware of it, and it was just a error, the shading error was the difference, so he was working on getting it fixed.
Was there anything else on zoning you wanted to bring up?
Other than leaving the public hearing, you know what I mean, until next meeting.
What, why does it say county planning board after that?
The, the, the review of the county planning board.
The review, didn't you get that?
Oh.
Yeah, that's in there.
Is, uh, yeah, I got that. I guess what I was thinking is, I've been told that, that Kelly is recommending cell towers within the confines of the village. Is, is that part of what's gonna be discussed?
That is part of what we amend, because the fairgrounds wants a cell tower on the backside of, over by eight twelve somewhere, and it's still in the village, I guess. Well, essential facilities are not allowed in, I think, the village center and the park zones. But, speaking with Kathy Manning today, the state has their own criteria for essential facilities. So, if it meets certain criteria, it doesn't matter what our zoning says, it's gonna go anyway. You know, you have to grant them a use for it, because it's essential utility. So, if they could prove certain things, which I, I guess they already have, then they could put a tower.
Does that mean that they could put one elsewhere within the village also?
I think they have to prove that they have a, what did you say today, Joe? That they have a void in their coverage or something, somehow?
Well, basically, they've already done downtown building. That's what them little, if you look at Purvines Building.
The one on top of the building, yeah.
Like boxes up on the side there that are painted to match the building.
I believe this is Verizon that's proposing this, but I'm not positive.
Yes. And it'll be, the towers could be, you know, where the little league baseball field, go up that big hill up on top, out back, so it's gonna be close to two Shaggs property.
Keep the fire enough away so as to fall on our ball field.
But it's gonna be far enough away that nobody's really gonna see it.
But the other thing is, you take like where Veterans Park goes up there behind the park.
That's what...
It's right in the D, that nothing like that can ever be put in that park.
But what?
That's, that's the reason why we wanna leave it open and have more discussion.
But here's my question. If what you said before that, Tim, is true, could that supersede even that?
I don't know.
That's the problem.
That's, that's the concern, we're gonna break the question.
That would be the fight between us and the state of New York.
Maybe the veterans.
Because when this was drawn up, they made special restrictions, so they could have like playgrounds.
Well, hopefully, the one tower will solve the issue.
Okay, speaking of Veterans Park, I don't have any updates.
So, we'll combine Veterans Park and the DRI. I'm not sure if last, last month we talked about our DRI meeting or whatever.
I agree.
Well, the last one was after our meeting.
The three village projects that are moving forward, it's, it's been submitted to Albany. All the projects that the LPC committee wanted in the project, or fit the, the money scope or whatever, has been submitted to New York State. We haven't heard anything. I think they were saying sometime in December?
Correct.
No, not until March before you hear.
Well, I think it was gonna be submitted in December.
Submitted in summer.
Okay.
You won't hear until March, when it begins in April.
You're right. So, the three projects that the village had submitted that are going to Albany are the Veterans Park, which would include the splash pad, the bathrooms, the...
Walkway.
The walkway, which is, it's an improvement of parking by Veterans Park. And the enhanced safety accessibility, which would have been out in front of the school. So, those are the three projects that the LPC, that the village applied for, that were sent to Albany. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
The, in the way that's gonna work, is the state has got thirteen million submitted to them, some odd change, and they could come back and say nine million, and then we have to go back to the drawing board with the ones that were. I don't, I can't tell you if that'll happen or what'll happen, but...
Well, they've gotta get it down to nine point seven.
Nine point seven.
Pay, pay the consultant three hundred thousand.
Yes, thank you. Nine point seven. And so, from there, it could, it could stand verbatim, other than the three billion that they're gonna have to come up with to eliminate. So, even though we submitted that, some of those are gonna get cut to a certain extent or eliminated.
They're either gonna get cut, or they could come back to us and say, well, we want you to reduce the cost at Veterans Park down a million dollars or whatever.
Right.
Or it could have been any of the projects.
And then we can go back and throw something else in.
Correct.
Yep.
But the good news is, it's in the state's hands now.
It's in the state's hands. Next one.
Okay, let's bring this down to new business.
Yep.
Craft surcharges. September twenty-four, water was zero. Sewer was seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Need a motion to prove that.
I'll make that motion. I'll figure it out.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, general fund budget amendment. Basically, what this is, is we've sold some surplus equipment, and all that money went into the general fund, which was, I think, close to eleven thousand dollars. And we just found out about a week and a half, two weeks ago, our boiler's bad in the police department, and it's basically jury-rig right now to keep it running, so they got a little bit of heat. So, Paul worked on getting some estimates. Our low estimate for replacing that boiler and getting us back up to speed, is sixty-five-hundred dollars. So, basically, what we wanna do is from the sale of equipment that went into general fund, we wanna transfer sixty-five-hundred dollars to the village's capital outlay fund, be able to pay for that new furnace.
Makes sense to me.
So, need a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion. We do that? I'll second, but when did you get that? Mayor?
Yeah. Okay, who is, who made the motion again?
I made the motion. Chuck, second to this.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That's a general fund grant. And seeing how we're right there, we have a motion to go ahead and purchase a new boiler for sixty-five-hundred dollars. That sixty-five-hundred dollars, by the way, is complete, installed, up and running.
I'll make a motion. We make that, Major. Second again.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Power CPA. Basically, every year, we do a yearly audit on our books, and basically, this is, I just need a motion to authorize me to sign this, which I already did.
I'll make that motion. Seconding.
Because they wanna start December second on our books. On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And then we got the village's tax re-levee. Any questions on that?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we authorize you to sign the re-levee. Yes. Yes, we have to sign that separately also. I think you have to take a roll call vote also.
I first say.
But I'll make the motion.
I'll have a little second.
On favor?
I think you gotta do a roll call.
So, that might be a roll call.
Yes.
Just a question, Mayor. On the re-levee, is this to bring us to a hundred percent?
This is the taxes. This is the people that haven't paid yet. This is the people that have not paid yet.
The, the two taxes.
They haven't paid their taxes yet.
This, this re-levee here is people that haven't paid their taxes, and it gets re-levee to the county.
Town and county.
That's what, this re-levee is here. But yes, Aaron is working on a town.
That's what I was wondering, if this is what...
No, this isn't.
The re-levee for, to bring us to a hundred percent.
But there, Dan, that's New York State telling her that she has to do it.
You're gonna do a roll call vote, right?
Yeah, someone might direct you to...
I think we did what you were going, okay. Dan?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
And Tim?
Yes.
Okay, brings us down to correspondence, though. We'll go update.
Yeah, so, the next Raycoy Board meeting will be January twenty-third, and I'll be at Town of Willoughby at six o'clock. And people don't come, they lots of times get nominated for chair and vice-chair.
That's the one in cartridge, have one of mine's cartridge?
That's correct. Um, the Raycoy Economic Research Institute, we already started planning for that. It's getting close, being put together. We're just trying to figure out the exact date that we're gonna hold that on. It'll be somewhere in April or May. The local government student activity program, we actually had eleven students participate in that on October twenty-fourth at BOSI. We had four from Lawville School District. We had five from Copenhagen and two from Beaver River. And out of that, we actually had mentioned about the Raycoy Board had approved having a student board formed. So, we actually have, I believe, we're gonna have four students in the Alphamalable area. We're actually meeting next Tuesday at the library, right after school, to start that and get their input into things, so... And then websites. Brian Phelps is doing a website training for the Raycoy websites on December tenth. It'll be at ten o'clock in the morning, and they'll be at Town of Denmark. And then water wastewater operator training. We've been working with BOSI's on that, and so DEC has some funding, I guess, to put towards that. And so, what they're looking to do is with a wastewater certification first. They said for students, it'd take two years to put the program together. That's just how it goes. But for continuing education for adults, they can do that sooner. So, they're talking about next September, offering like a continued education to do the, get the wastewater certification for any operators, especially municipalities that have anybody who wants to go through. I know BOSI's had mentioned there's some workforce development money that might be available, too. And so, his goal is hopefully that any, like municipalities who have employees that wanna go through it, they could potentially be fully covered for that. So, we'll know more as we continue to move forward with that and keep updated. They still wanna do the water certification, that's still high on the list, but just have to be some funds available through the DEC for, for doing that type of thing right now for the wastewater, so... So, that's moving forward. Actually, we got, we have another meeting coming up in early December, so I might have a little bit more information at your next meeting on that. So, that's pretty much what I have right now, unless you have any question.
What did you say the next meeting was?
For Raycoy? Oh, I don't, become chair. It's January twenty-third, six o'clock.
Officer and committee reports. Officer and committee reports.
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing. Quick treasurer, you got your report? Do you know Wendy? Or if not, I can double check with Pam. On this report, I was just looking at the third item down, ARPA pump. Did you see we have a balance there? And that would be a Pam question?
Yeah, please.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't have a balance there.
No, that, that's what I mean. That was supposed to go on the streetlight bill, that's what. And I was told, that's where it was going, told me. Basically, when we made the half payment, part of that half payment was supposed to clean out this account. That's why I'll have to double check that, so. Because basically, we have to have it all used up by the end of December for reusing. That's why I told him to put it towards LED lighting. But I'll double check that, let's see if I can get it. Okay, I think everybody's got a copy of the chief's report. He's enjoying a vacation. He's got some pretty decent weather for it, too. Superintendent?
Yep, so, our leaf pickup has been completed. We did it for a little over a month. Guys are out there busy. We had tons of leaves. If you are a resident and you still have leaves, the sewer plant is still open. It'll probably be open until snow starts falling, so you can bring them down there into the bunks. We've put up our Christmas lights. I hope everybody's got to see them. I think it looks really good. We had, we had some extra ones that we refurbished and put up, so now we've got tons of them.
There's a couple that are working, they're working together.
They are. They're all working. Their timers are just a little bit off.
Thank you.
I checked one last night.
If you haven't noticed, there's actually a new Christmas tree at Monument Park, which was put in this weekend by All Seasons. The last one, it was okay, but this is a brand-new tree, one that was off a state contract, so it should blossom into a nice, nice Christmas tree. DPW crews are now getting ready to, getting ready for any snowfall we have. We're, we're almost a hundred percent right now. Hopefully, we don't get any snow at all, in my opinion. And lastly, the flood drainage reimbursement for our storm is ongoing. I'm in contact with FEMA and New York State DISH, tons of paperwork that I've been doing. Hopefully, we're going to get tons of money back that we've already spent, maybe a little more. So, that's, that's a process that's probably going to take a couple of years before we see a reimbursement. But right now, we're having weekly meetings. That's all I got.
Just one more thing on the reimbursement part of it. Basically, through FEMA, the village would only get reimbursed seventy-five percent of our costs. And then another twelve and a half percent would probably come from the state. And talking with DISH, they're saying possibly the state might cough up the full twenty-five percent. Still, we're looking at getting a pretty decent chunk of money back once Paul's shit his paper and he's buried with that paper.
Normally, they say four to five years. But since I've dealt with FEMA before, I knew that whatever we did needed to be done to the standard it was or better, and it needs to be done permanent. So, that's why I think we're going to get the money back a lot sooner, because they did all that, took over two thousand pictures and tons of, tons of documentation, and that's what they like to see. So, hopefully, I'm right on top of it and we get our money back quick.
Capital future plan.
Nothing to report?
Personnel.
Yes, happy to announce that starting next Monday, we will have a new face in the clerk's office. She'll be Wendy's assistant, the assistant clerk. Her name is Kaylee Turk. She will be starting on Monday. She, she would, for those that don't know her, she's Kate Turk's daughter. That's all I have.
Finance. Please, fire department.
Do you have anything, Joe? I missed the last meeting, sorry.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you guys remember, but Governor Hochul announced back in March, April, that she was awarding twenty-five million dollars to fire departments. We did put in for some money with a lot of help from the county grant writer. We were notified probably a little month ago. It was after the last meeting, but before this one. We were awarded the money, so we got two hundred and six thousand dollars coming towards us. That's going to be used for, for purchasing a new generator, a new air pack cleaning system, a new hose washer, and a new cascade system for filling air bottles. So, it totals two hundred and six thousand dollars that the state's giving us. All in all, there were actually, there were three fire departments in Lewis County that got, were issued money from that. And then there were two other fire departments that service Lewis County. They're Jefferson County departments, so they service Lewis County. If you count all five of those departments, Lewis County got a million dollars of that twenty-five million. So, that's a pretty good chunk for the North Country, I think, so. But like I said, I want to give credit to the, the county grant writer, gave us a lot of help with that. And our treasurer, Brian Hanno, put in all the legwork from the fire department side. So, I want to give them credit for that. That's all I got.
Police department, anything, Tim?
No.
The only thing I know is, I think, Harold's expecting delivery of his new police vehicle within the next couple of weeks.
It was shipped two weeks ago.
He may have that by the next board meeting. Planning Gordon's own board, no?
Yeah, they had no meetings this month.
Mr. Gordon.
Just a short meeting, last week, quite short. Not quite a record, but it was, it was short.
Town's more, right?
Yep.
Towny, anything?
I don't have anything, unless Minnie or Audrey have any.
Audrey?
Andrea, Andrea. My daughter, granddaughter's Audrey, so.
So, that's when we get over.
We've been saving you a seat, you just haven't been there.
I watched it online again.
It's not the same as being in person.
Well, it was only a short meeting anyway, it was like. Nothing pertaining to the village.
Recreation.
Yes, we got an email from Tim Hunt. He's requested a meeting next Tuesday at one-thirty with certain players that are involved in recreation. And I don't know anything other than that, and I'll keep you abreast of that. We do need to move forward so that we're not playing the last minute as to what, what we're going to do next year. But I think in the next thirty days, we will have some fairly definitive answers. Thank you.
One thing I would like to say on that is, I think the, not sure how this meeting's going to go next week, but it was really messed up this year. There was too many fingers in the pie, number one. Usually, it was just a town and the village, and we would, contract would double play, and everything went smooth. But there was, part of the problem this year, too, was the July tenth flooding, because then we lost a school, and if kids were getting bust at Krogen and bust at the educational center out here on East Road. But I think going forward, if they want to make this a regional summer rec program, I am fine with it. But I think when it comes to the village, I think we should just budget a certain amount. And whoever's going to run the regional program, we cut the check for that amount we budget yearly. But as far as our office staff dealing with trying to figure out who pays what. I mean, this year, there was bills from four different places, where usually, we just dealt with one. And it was, like I say, basically, out of two hundred and eighty-some kids, only eighty-four of them were village residents. So, I just think, yes, the village can be involved, but take the one lump sum payment and let the county or somebody run the program.
Mayor, I would agree with that, and I don't have the...
But just be, be thinking about that, because, I mean, if you talk to the girls in the office, even Pam, when she was here, it's, this summer was a total nightmare.
And Mayor, I'd like to add one thing, that it was, I was told this week. I wasn't at a neighboring town board meeting, but they said they wanted absolutely nothing to do with it. From what I was told, that it was nothing more than a babysitting service. And I feel that the village taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for, for anybody outside the village unless their towns are willing to participate, or we come up with something else. And we had, like, I think, well, over a hundred people, our children from outside the village and the town, which we graciously have been taking. We just, we just can't continue to do that without everybody being responsible for their own. And I don't even know logistically if we should be doing that, because our taxpayers are the ones that are funding. So, we have to, we have to, we have to be cognizant of that fact. And I said it before, and I'll say it again, and that's, that's my point.
Just some numbers to throw out. At last, this year, the village, we upfronted over ninety-eight thousand dollars of that recreation program. Yes, eventually, we did get twenty thousand back from the county. We got fifteen thousand back from the solar people over there, and then there was a couple of youth grants. We're still waiting on a five thousand dollar grant from the state, which we haven't got back yet. But basically, it was the village that upfronted all the money, and then we had to wait to get monies back. Nobody came in from any of the other towns or villages. Not even the Town of Lawwell had contributed until we finally sent them a bill last week. So, I mean, basically, the village is carrying the load on us, and it's got to change. That's all I got on it. Okay, I guess that brings us down to public comment.
Hold on, Joe. I want to back up. Did you want to put the two thousand seventeen Ford Fusion, the car, the police car, and ask the trustees to put it in surplus?
Yeah, I'm talking with the, we finally got it back.
Yeah.
It's been back and forth to school for the last couple of months, but it's finally back in our possession. So, now it's back in our possession, yes, we would like to declare it surplus and put it on auction.
That's the previous chief's car.
We need a motion to do that.
We need a motion to sell the surplus to the police car.
Yes, basically, it's a two thousand seventeen Ford Fusion.
I'll make a motion we sell it as surplus.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now bring us down to public comment.
Well, I guess I got. Kind of a pat on the back to you, Paul. A lot of people commented about the lights being up on the poles and how good the park looks, the way the lights are on the fountain and on the new Christmas tree. It looks really nice. A lot of people have commented on it.
I appreciate that, and that's all the DPW guys.
Yeah, and I got to give the boys a pat on the back, because picking up the leaves and stuff, they clean up after they make the initial pass. They don't leave a mess all over. And I noticed that when they, they dug it on my street with them.
Thank you.
I wanted to give you and the boys a pat on the back for the job that they're doing.
They like donuts.
That was a good stuff.
Okay.
The chief isn't here, but I noticed the parking. Let me, one of my all-time favorites I saw last week was a libation truck delivering to Stewart's. And there was about twelve-thirty, which is a bad time at Stewart's anyway. And the truck was parked in the turning lane, right across from the driveway. And the driver wasn't in it. I don't know where he was. I assume he must have went into Stewart's and was waiting to try to get in, but his truck is parked in the turning lane right there where the upside exit was, which made it kind of interesting. I wasn't coming out of Stewart's, I was going home, so. But today, coming back from breakfast, from the historical society's building, to, right to the corner, it was solid parking. As a matter of fact, I stopped and let the person pull in and park in front of the fire hydrant, just to fill that last gap up, because it was solid all the way up through. And it's bad enough when you've got people parked across the, on the crosswalks, but to be parked in front of the hydrants, and that's all over the village when that's being done.
That's when the fire department, if they got a fire, they just smash the windows out and run the whole?
Yeah, that's a fireman's dream, believe it. Some people are, you know, slow to what you do. And the last thing, back to you, Paul.
Yes.
The, did you have any say with the state? Not about redoing the sidewalk where they tore it up, but where they put the posts now for to change the crosswalk from walking? Have you looked at that, Joe? I think you might agree with me that the two and a half plug on the North State's street side is not going to be used.
I don't see the fire yet, but.
Yeah. Did you have any input at all where they put that? Nothing.
It's DOT property, the old line yards.
Yeah. Well, it's certainly going to make it a little bit harder for the fire department to make their connection on that side, that they have to use it.
The last two months, except, other than the month of July, when we had the fair, was the highest two months of hard, just tickets being issued. We had eighteen in September, seventeen in October. So, you know, that, so tickets are being issued. How many could be issued is another question, but there's eighteen and seventeen. So, there's some of the most run, single digits, nine, nine, eight, six, one, for the last two months. So, apparently, there's some issues going on right now with the park.
Yeah, well, I'll always keep my eyes out for the crosswalks and the hydrants.
Any other public comment? Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?